Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board meeting. We will now call on Mrs. Robin Newell to introduce her beautiful students from Mitchell Nelson Elementary that will be doing our pledge, and after the pledge we'll stand for a moment of silence.
Thank you very much. I am very excited to introduce you to our Student Leadership Council. The officers are at LBL right now, but these are our 5th grade reps, and if y'all will please come up. And Ms. Chaney, you want to come up too? She is our 5th grade student council advisor. Would you like to introduce yourself, or you want me to do it?
My name is Jaylen Elch.
My name is Carter Johnson.
You ready? Ask him to stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We will now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Before we approve this agenda, Mrs. Baker, I want to make sure it's okay if we add to our agenda tonight. It was from our retreat, the discussion of the Professional Day and what's the other day? I've forgotten the other day.
Personal.
Personal and Professional Day. Do you have any problem? This can go on. Okay. If you would, please add before we take the vote for the agenda, the approval of the agenda, adding to our agenda discussion of Professional and Development Day. And is the one that entertained the motion would be all right with the amended agenda?
Yes.
All righty. And the second?
Yes.
All righty. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening.
We're ready for communication.
Thank you. Well, first I'd like to welcome, we have some teachers who are doctoral students at Lipscomb in the audience tonight, so I'd like to welcome you all. I think they're here on a class assignment, but we're glad that you're here regardless of why you're here. Congratulations to the school and also to the support areas, particularly the maintenance department. We are below the state and national average as far as job-related accidents and injuries. Murfreesboro's case incident rate is 3.18 injuries per 200,000 hours work, while Tennessee's average is 3.3 and the national average is 5.0. So I want to acknowledge our employees for being careful, not getting hurt, and especially for our maintenance department for making sure that there's nothing there that would be in our way for folks to trip over like Lynda Gilbert might do. Our student art exhibit and competition will begin on March 18th, and that will be held in the City Hall Rotunda. And winners will be announced at a 4:30 reception on April 17th. So if you go outside tonight, you'll notice the artwork is already there, gorgeous artwork, and we will be having a reception here at 4:30 on April 17th. The Community Outreach Department would like to thank the YMCA Older Active Adult Program for their donation of snacks to the backpack program, along with the Community Bible Study Group for their donation of school supplies. They also would like to thank Ms. Chris Jones from Ingram Books. They have donated books to the Franklin Heights Family Learning and Resource Center. Early childhood screening was March 24th, but another is scheduled for 9:00 until 1:00 on April 12th at Bellwood. So if there are families who feel that they may have students who may have some vision problems or hearing problems or other disabilities, we would like to catch them early and help them. So the next screening again will be April 12th at Bellwood from 9:00 until 1:00. Me and My Family, community event, this is in partnership with Reed to Succeed. We had a huge event last year at Black Fox. This year it will be at Kason Lane. It will be March 27th from 5:00 until 7:00 PM. So invite all the parents who are Murfreesboro City School parents and others to come to Kason Lane from 5:00 to 7:00. April 12th is the Job Fair. This will be from 9:30 in the morning until noon at Scales. So we welcome anyone who is interested in becoming a member of the Murfreesboro City Schools family, not just teachers, but also educational assistants and bus drivers, anyone who wants to be part of the family. We certainly welcome you to come to the Job Fair. ESP will hold a skills-based soccer program beginning the week of April 14th. We have been wanting to do soccer for some time, so we're actually going to start that, and that will be in partnership with Murfreesboro Parks and Rec and the Murfreesboro Soccer League. And then finally, Spring Break is March 31st through April 4th. Today I wrote the principals and I said, "Snow Day," and they said, "No, we're too close to Spring Break." So we will have Spring Break next week. And those are your communications.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. And also I want to back up and thank Mitchell Nelson for coming and doing our pledge.
Absolutely.
And Mrs. Newell for doing the introductions. Consent items, if there's a motion to approve consent items?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Action items, and under action items, if you, we have A-B, if you put down as number C, Personal Day slash Professional Day. All righty. Mrs. Baker?
Okay. First you have for your approval tonight on first reading are some of the board policies that you reviewed at the last meeting. First, we have Board Policy BF-51 regarding collaborative conferencing. This policy is in response to a state statute called the Professional Educators Collaborative Conferencing Act. In 2011, the legislature adopted the Collaborative Conferencing Act, which superseded the then existing Education Professional Negotiations Act. And now we deal with our, enter into collaborative conferencing with our employees rather than negotiations. So this policy is being recommended for adoption in order to embody the state law regarding collaborative conferencing.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Baker? Mr. Barrett?
Just maybe a deletion, the line 14. We've already spelt it out at the, at line 6, so we could probably just drop professional, you know, spelling out the Pika, or however you say that, Peka.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of first reading.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy BF-52 regarding homeschooling. This policy is also based on a state statute, which is State Statute Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 49-6-3050. And that is the state law that deals with homeschooling. And this policy sets forth the law and the procedures that parents would have to follow if they were choosing to homeschool their children. And as we discussed at the policy session, any parent wishing to homeschool their child has to meet certain requirements under state law. And those requirements include providing annual notice to the director of schools before the commencement of each school year of the intent to conduct a home school, to submit to the director of schools the name, number, age, grade level of children involved, location of the school, curriculum to be offered, the proposed hours of instructions, the qualification of the parent teacher, and the description of the courses to be taught each year, to maintain attendance records that are under state law, subject to inspection of the local director of schools, to submit those attendance records to the director of schools at the end of each school year, and that is pursuant to state law, to provide instruction for at least four hours per day for the same number of instructional days as are required by state law for public schools, and I believe that's 180 days. And that too is a state law requirement, not our policy requirement. To possess, the parent teacher must possess a high school diploma or a GED in order to conduct classes. They must cooperate in the administration to homeschool students of appropriate test by the Tennessee Commissioner of the Education Department or the commissioner's designee or by a professional testing service. They must take action according to state law if the homeschool student falls behind appropriate grade level. And the state law does set out in detail what steps have to be taken by a homeschool parent teacher if that child falls below grade level. They must submit proof to the director of schools that the homeschool student has been vaccinated as required by law, and they must submit proof to the director that other health services and examination, as required by state statutes, have been received by the homeschool student. And in the event of any illness or inadequacy of the homeschool parent teacher to teach a specific subject, such as the homeschool parent doesn't feel they're qualified to teach a mathematics course or a chemistry class for older students, the state law requires that that parent teacher employ a tutor that is qualified to teach that to the homeschool student. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
Mr. Campbell?
Going on down, number three, on further down under where it says, "Request for services are made known by the homeschool parent." What are those services?
Yes. Under the state statute and is embodied in our board policy, if the homeschool student requires some special services, such as, those could encompass any sort of special ed services, they could also more likely encompass the older homeschool students, and not necessarily in our age range that we deal with, if they need access to a chemistry lab. Under the state law, they have the right to ask for that access to the local school, public school.
Okay.
So that is what that, I believe, references.
All right. So those services are related to academics and not necessarily outside activities?
No.
They're not academics?
No. They're related to academic needs.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Phillips, and then Mrs. Smith.
When we first discussed this at our last meeting, we were concerned as a board regarding the lateness of being able to identify students who had fallen behind, and there was some discussion of contacting our legislators about this. Are we going to move forward on that?
I think it would make sense to do that. It's too late to do that this year, of course, but I think next year it needs to be done.
I think that's a good idea, because, I mean, by the time, according to state law, by the time we identify the children, it is too late to help them catch up. So, and, so I just want to follow up on that. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I actually was going to speak to the same issue. We have to go by this policy. I mean, there are only 13 kids apparently in our system that, not in our system, but that are, that file through as homeschool students that report to the director of schools, is what I was told. I think Mr. Lyles said some number like that. So we're not talking about the homeschool programs that have, you know, great umbrella programs through churches and all. We're talking about just a few students, but every child counts. And I'm worried about the education that some of these children might be receiving, especially since we don't really know how well they're doing until, is it 5th grade?
Yes. 5th grade is the first year that we by law can, the Tennessee Department of Education requires that they submit to testing as 5th grade.
Well, I would like for it to be on the record that I will reluctantly vote to pass this, because I think it's inadequate.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain Mrs. Renear.
Well, I guess I too have to echo Mrs. Smith in that we know that this is state law, but TCR, no, TCR, it's TCA. But not only is that area not stringent enough, but also the area in which, I think it's number 11 at the top, in the event of illness or inadequacy of the homeschool parent teacher to teach a specific subject, they have to employ a tutor having the same qualifications as required of the parent teacher. So for me, when my children hit algebra and chemistry and things, there's no way I could have taught, and I'm a licensed teacher. But to think that someone who maybe doesn't have the skills needed, they're going to turn around and get someone else who perhaps doesn't have the skills needed, and we know this is probably never going to happen, but nevertheless, we think this is not strong enough.
Mr. Campbell?
Ms. Baker, can, can the local board, even though it's state law and Tennessee Code says it, can we add to that as far as our local situation we want it to be?
Unfortunately, we cannot. It makes the law more stringent in this situation. These are the boundaries that the law has set for homeschool students at this point.
Okay. Mr. Barrett?
I just had a question, maybe clarify. So four hours a day for 180 days? Or is it four hours split out and equals 180 days?
That verbiage is straight out of the state statute.
So it's four hours a day for 180 days?
That's what it says.
So even though our kids are going to school for seven, you know, what, six, seven hours? That seems a little, yeah, we definitely need to strengthen this. So we need to contact our state legislators.
Yeah. And I just want the board to be clear and the public to understand, this policy is verbatim state law, and this is what the state law requires. And we felt it was important that it be placed in a board policy so that people are aware what the law is. Because I know we, as a system, will get asked questions, "Well, what do I do if I want to homeschool my child?"
Mrs. Renear?
Well, I think we need to put Mr. Barrett right on this, since you're our legislative person, so that, write this down for next year that we can work on this.
Are there any other questions or comments?
John, I need to clarify one more time on this.
All righty.
Mr. Campbell is our legislative person. He's our district person.
Right. So both of them. There you go.
Two years are better than one, right?
If there are no other comments, and Mrs. Price, if you please note in the minister concern of the board, and thank you for your concern. If nothing more, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. The next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy SS-2, Contract Services for Specialized Activities in the Extended School Program. This is a policy that was already existing on the books that dealt with how we went about contracting services to be provided during the Extended School Program. And the changes that were made to that policy is that approval of any contracts also need the approval of, the need to be shown to me as the city school board attorney and the director of schools and the supervisor of ESP. Anytime that we, as a school system, enter into a contract, it's important that we make sure that we are covered legally and that the director is aware of those contracts. So that was, that addition was made to this policy.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Baker? Here are none, we entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any disapprove? Thank you. Action item B is, Dr. Gilbert, I'll pass this one on to you.
Yes. At the last meeting, we approved changing the name of Bellwood Bowden Preschool to Discovery School. Since that time, and some of us were not aware of the Bellwood name as referring to a national person. So I would like to recommend that we change that vote, please, to be the Discovery School at Bellwood instead of just the Discovery School. And I have talked with Dr. Clark about that.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions or anything for Dr. Gilbert at this time? I know it was discussion at the retreat, and I do, Mr. Barrett?
Well, not so much a question, but maybe in the future, we just need to have someplace, you know, the meaning of our names for each school. I mean, seems like we need to maybe do some research and put that someplace, so in the future we can...
Right. And I think, I think the thought was that that, really the name was for the community, and it was, and it was for a person. So, and also the board has, certainly board members have knowledge of it, that would be helpful to bring forward.
Okay. And Dr. Gilbert, let me just ask for future reference. It was discussed, or maybe it was just asked, if in the future or even now, is there a plaque that can be put on that building, letting us know what that name signifies and still go with the name?
Yes. Discovery. That's up to the board.
Mrs. Renear?
It just dawned on me. I was at a meeting not long ago, and I was told that the original curriculum written by Ruth Bowden is presently housed at First Baptist Church, and they would like for us to get it. I have the name of the person who has it, and we can get that and kind of archive it in some way.
Good. That would be great.
Okay.
Is there any discussion or a motion, since we had voted another way with the name, is there a motion?
I move we accept Dr. Gilbert's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second for the naming of the school to remain Discovery School at Bellwood, or, I hope that's correct. Thank you. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, Personal Day, Professional Day?
Yes. And I apologize, I am not prepared for this, but I continue the way it works. Each certified employee has a Personal Day, a Professional Day, and a day that can be personal or professional. Typically what happens is, and we have asked the principals, to use Professional Days before using what's called temporary duty leave, because we do have the Professional Days built into the budget. And also, Mr. Anderson, is that the funding for that, and is that from the state for those, or is that?
No, it would be just in our regular budget.
Okay. So basically what we have is, we have teachers that attend training, and those days, the first day, we ask them to use their Professional Day. But in a typical year, especially the last few years, we have had many more days besides the one day of Professional Day. And so what happens is, then we use temporary duty leave. The Personal Day does not have to have any reason for that. The teachers can take one or two days of the Personal Day, and they don't have to give a reason. For the Professional Day, there does have to be a reason, because that day is delegated for the professional growth of the teacher.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Mrs. Phillips and Mr. Campbell?
I have several questions. First of all, I didn't, I missed the email that this was going to be on the agenda.
Nor did I. I'm sorry.
That's okay. But I am glad, I am glad. So I just was wondering if I'd missed it. The, um, I understand that we had originally had a description or definition of what a Professional Day was, Personal Day was, and what's the other one? I can't think of the name of the...
Temporary Duty.
Yeah, Temporary Duty Day. And it was on the website, and that that definition has been removed.
That's right, because it was incorrect.
The last couple of days?
But we had clarified that with the principals from the beginning of the year, and also on, when it was on the paper copy, that is the way that it was stipulated.
Now, is this a departure, Dr. Gilbert, from the precedent of how we had handled this in the past?
In the past, with, especially with the paper copies and also with talking with the principals at the beginning of the year, I think we made it very clear that the Professional Day was to be taken first, and that's what we asked, because we were aware that there were going to be additional days besides just the Professional Day that the teachers would need. And we knew that we were going to have the training, because we have to have the training. And so what we asked the principals at that time is to ask the teachers to please take their Professional Day for that first training. There was a time when the district, and this would have been several years ago, when really the state was offering trainings, a lot of different trainings, or you would have organizations that would be offering a lot of different trainings. That's not the case anymore. So what you don't find is you don't have a lot of trainings from the state that teachers can go to during the year, nor do you have organizations, frankly. You typically will have, your librarians will have an association and a meeting, your physical education teachers will have a meeting, your guidance counselors will have a meeting, and I'm trying to think if there are other, and I'm looking at the audience to see if there are any other meetings. ELL will have a meeting, and we will send, teachers will go to those. But at one time, you had a lot more organizations, and the state was offering a lot more meetings. That's not the case anymore. So as far as choices of meetings, there really are not a lot of choices in meetings. As far as our practice with Professional Days, it has remained the same, though.
I understand that the teachers are certain, some of the teachers have concerns. Do you understand what their concerns are?
Well, I went back and I, after, after the, after the meeting on Saturday, I went back and I did see where I had talked with the principals. And in fact, I think I reiterated this last year too, to ask them to please take their Professional Days before they took their TDL. So I, if there's, if there's a misunderstanding there, I'll be happy to, but to clarify that. But that is, that has been past practice. Now, what you do find is you do find us offering a lot more professional development at the local level than what we've ever offered before. So you find a lot more TDL than what we've offered before. There was one time when you probably had, a teacher had a Professional Day and a Personal Day, or a couple of Personal Days, and they may have only taken the one Professional Day. But what you'll find now is you'll have several teachers with TDLs. Almost every teacher is going to have, in addition to the Professional Day, the TDLs. What, what happens is, if the teacher has already used a Professional Day, if she's used a Professional, he's used a Professional Day to come to one of our trainings, if there is a conference that they need to go to, and I'm thinking about the National Gifted Conference, I'm thinking about all the ones that I just mentioned for the, the Second Language Conference for the librarians, and then what they will do is they will let their principal know that they'd like to attend that meeting, the principal will sign them up for a TDL, and then I'll approve it. But that principal is the gatekeeper for that. So if the principal does not feel that the teacher, and one thing I've asked them, be sure to take a look at the conferences that your teachers are going to, make sure that you're seeing a difference in the teaching and that there's a reason for it. So that, so that just because a person's been going to a conference for five years is not guaranteed they're going to go to that conference the next year. But if the principal says, "Yes, this is a good conference, we need to go," then that's the way we work it. They go.
Well, it seems to me that, from what I understand from the teachers, that this is being done differently this year than it's ever been done before. And for some reason, there seems to be a disconnect or a communication gap, some, some issue that is not 100% clear to me, because I am not as familiar with things like Temporary Duty, Professional Days, and probably someone, a teacher would have much greater understanding than I would. But I am concerned about the miscommunication or the disconnect there, and I'm sure that you will address that and work with that. And you had a point about that, Ms. Renear?
Well, Mr. Campbell.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Mrs. Renear?
I just want to make sure I understand this. Every teacher gets one Professional Day.
That's right.
They get one Personal Day.
That's right.
They get one Professional or Personal.
Right.
So that's three days.
That's right.
Okay. Their Personal Day plus their Professional-Personal, which are where they, those two days, if they are not used, they roll over into their sick bank.
That's right.
Correct?
The two Personal Days do. Right.
Okay. All right. So here's a scenario that I don't understand, somebody will need to explain. These are two teachers. Jared goes to professional training, okay? Mary Wade goes to professional training, okay? They've used their Professional Day. Jared goes to another professional meeting. Mary does not. Therefore, Mary has got two days to roll over into her sick leave, and he's only got one day to roll over into it, because his Personal slash or Professional and his Personal Day can go to his sick leave.
He would have, what I would do in that case, and I have done it, is when I see that coming across my desk, then what I say is, "Please make this a TDL." That's the way I operate with that. If they've already used their Professional Day and they're coming up, then I'm going to say, "Please make this a TDL day and make this a Personal Day." And I've done that several times this year.
So in any case, then, a teacher is not having to use their Personal Day or their Professional slash Personal Day for a conference.
Right. But that is a change, because in the past, there were teachers who were asked to use both of those days for their Professional Day, and they probably, or that day for their Professional Day, and they probably, it could be argued that that... day for their professional day, and they probably, it could be argued that that legally, that the principal could ask that, if they're on an improvement plan particularly, but that has not been the case this year. When I see, when I go in, what it looks like is, I will go in if there's a TDL day requested, okay? If they've not used any of their personal or professional days, then I'm going to go in, and I'm going to ask that principal to check with the teacher, and make sure it's okay to use the professional day, because that's what we've stipulated, is we've asked them to use their professional day first before giving TDL. But if I have a teacher that's going in, and she's requesting a professional day, and I've already seen that she's used that professional day, then I'll go back in and ask them to make that a TDL day, and to give that teacher their personal day.
Okay, is it law that we have to offer a professional day, a personal day, a professional slash personal day?
Mr. Ringstaff?
I think it's, not all school districts offer personal days, right?
Now, I think this, I don't have the statute in front of me, we, I did at the retreat when we looked at it, I know that it at least covered one professional day and one personal day. This third day, I would need to review the statute, that may...
Well, I, wait a minute, I'm not finished.
Then I would suggest, in next year's budget, we don't offer, quote, "professional days", we only offer the personal day, the personal slash professional. The first professional day that they need to use for a meeting, we just absorb that within the system, as, if it's TDL, if that's what you want to call it. I think part of the confusion is with the scenario that I gave you with Mary and Jared, because the teachers that are not going to two professional meetings, my understanding is, then they have a personal day and a personal professional day, and both of those days, if they're not used, can roll over into their sick leave. The professional day in the beginning cannot. So if every time they had, they had a meeting to go to, a training or whatever, we just, we took it, and we had those days in our budget, and it would be the same thing as it is now, maybe the confusion would not be there, because I think that's part of the confusion with that, and TDL. TDL comes by as a result of the teacher wanting to go to a meeting and doesn't have the day to do so?
That's part of it, it would also come if we have additional trainings that we're asking our teachers to come. So it can be both things, but then your professional day is the same situation.
But your TDL doesn't count against the teacher?
Right.
That's absorbed by the system.
And, right, and, right. I was going to say, and technically, your professional day is, because either way, you're paying a substitute.
Teachers who do not have, I'm going to say, like, homeroom, third grade teacher, fourth grade teacher, I'm talking about people like librarians, PE teachers, so forth and so on, those folks. If they go to a professional meeting, a training session, are we paying for a substitute to be in their classrooms all the time, or not?
If they're having, if they have students, yes. So your PE teacher that you mentioned, your music teacher, anyone that would have a class that would be responsible for students, yes.
Okay.
So they're in the same situation.
Okay, okay.
But either, I guess the thing that I want you to understand is, when it comes to the two personal days, are the ones that can roll in.
Okay, and they take a personal day, they don't have to tell anybody where they're going or why they're going?
No.
That's their day to use if they want to.
That's right.
So then, in essence, could we say they get a professional day and two personal days?
Basically, that's what we've done this year.
Well, see, I don't think that...
Because...
I don't think the majority of the teachers understand it that way.
Okay.
I really don't, and I don't know, other board members may disagree, but the communication that I've had, that's not the way they're understanding it.
Then I'll clarify it with principals.
Well, I'm not too sure sometimes that the principals are always clarifying with teachers, and I hate to say that, but I think that's the case.
I think, I think the board, I think, to me, the confusion comes with the personal-professional, because I can, when I, there was a time, the change that I see is that we are giving a lot more TDL than what we've ever given before, because I can remember, when I was in the classroom, I took two professional days, because I wanted to go to that second conference, and I didn't ask for a TDL. So I think that may be, that may be where the confusion's coming, because I have given more TDL, because I...
See, I...
Here's my opinion on that. It's kind of like offering professional development after school, and on Saturday, that's great, and that's fine, but if there's something we really feel like our teachers absolutely need, if it's foundational knowledge, then to me, it ought to be during the school day.
I agree.
And so, that is the reason that, that if it's foundational knowledge to me, then that's the reason I have gone in, and if they've had a professional day there for that second day, I've gone in and said, look, let's make that a TDL.
And it may be part of...
So part of that may be mine, because I've done it that way.
It may be partly that everybody doesn't understand the TDL.
Well, and we've never, like I said, we've never used it like we've used it the last two years. But I can tell you that the professional development, one of the things that we have is, we have a central office staff that can give the best professional development to state, which is a good thing, because nobody else seems to be offering it anymore, like they used to with the state. And so when you look at common formative assessment, or you look at autism training, or you look at vocabulary training, or you look at just standards training, or you look at Common Core training, or you look at assessment, we've been doing it in-house. And so, when we do that, and you're going to see me offering TDL for that, if they've already used their professional day, because I think it's that important.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Rainier and Mrs. Smith?
I have several comments. Getting back, I think, to what Mrs. Baker and Mr. Ringstaff were talking about, if I'm not mistaken, state law provides one personal, one professional, and I believe the third day was something that we negotiated, that could be used either personal or professional. Did you look it up?
Yes, I just, I looked up the state statute, the state statute only requires one personal and one professional.
That's what I thought. And so I believe that was through negotiations that we got that third day, which could be used either way. My feeling is this, and I have several comments along that line also, but my feeling is this, and I believe it's been the feeling of the Murfreesboro City Schools for years, that we offer these professional days because we want our teachers to be educated about new trends in education, we want them to know what's going on, we want them to be aware of everything else, good practices, all those things. So we would like them to use those days, and that usually means getting a substitute. However, now that we're doing so much in-house, I know of some teachers who have been out of the classroom six and seven days, I don't know if it's half-days, full-days, whatever, I know you're talking about foundational skills, and we want foundational knowledge for our teachers. Yes, of course we do, especially with the changes that we've made over the past three years, that's vital to them. However, speaking of foundation, I would tend to disagree a little bit here, in that a substitute is not going to be as good at that foundational knowledge as that classroom teacher. So in that regard, I know, golly jeepers, I hated to have to go to an in-service or whatever after school, but the teachers still have to earn their points, their in-service points, so I still see some value in that as well. I hate the thought of teachers being gone that many days for training, out of the classroom, that's one point. The other point, as I think Mr. Campbell was trying to get to, and what I've heard from some teachers, and we discussed this the other day at the retreat, for instance, you have someone here, I believe, from ELL, when an ELL, unless things have changed, when an ELL teacher was out of the building, when a guidance counselor was out of the building, they didn't have to have a substitute. So that's where this issue is coming from, that, and I could be wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. Anybody there speak to it?
Karen, could you, could you address that?
I know for ELL, they do have, they do have subs.
They do now?
They do have subs, they had last week, I know that I found one for one of the teachers, so I...
Okay, what about like an interventionist, do they have a substitute?
Yes.
Okay, well, there have, some of the confusion or some of the comments I've gotten from teachers is that there are certain people in the building, maybe speech therapists, ELL, I don't know who all, but certain people don't have to have a substitute, and that's where some of, maybe the anger and frustration is coming from, in that the classroom teacher who has her 20 lovely little children sitting there, when she goes to training, she's losing that day, she can't roll it over into sick leave, where the people who are going to training, who don't have to have a sub, get to keep those days and roll them into sick leave.
They should not be losing their personal days, and those things that roll in.
Well, I'm not saying personal, I'm saying professional, the one professional, and then that optional day. So they're maybe not getting to have the benefit of being able to roll it into sick leave, where some of the others keep their days. That's been a, that's an issue with some of them. Let's see, let me see what else. You talked about granting TDL for, they take their professional day first, and then you're giving TDL for another, is that only system-wide or system-training that we do, or could it be, I want to go to this, golly, what was it, Beryl or something, that provided so many in-service meetings for us? Of course, it was a cost, but if they wanted to go to some other training, does that now, is that TDL, or is that their second day?
No, if they have, no, if they have used, if they have used their professional day, then that's TDL. And I gave, for example, I gave a bunch of them last week for the TSAL conference.
Okay, okay. Well, those are just some points and some things that, you know, I've heard concerns about. And I guess, one more thing, I'm sorry, that I would disagree unfortunately with Mr. Campbell in that, when you said, take away one of those days for next year, please don't ever take away anything that teachers and people have worked so hard to get, that would kind of be, making me think of, oh my gosh, start taking away, and then they're going to think next thing is, they have duty lunch again in the cafeteria and all those things, that would be a horrible thing for a teacher, and I know that's not what you mean, but...
Don't even put it out there.
Oh, I know, I know, but they, in that same regard, if they don't use that personal and/or professional, and, you know, that optional day, they do want the opportunity to roll it over, so if you take it away from them, they don't have it.
That's not the day I'm talking about.
Okay.
The day I was talking about was that one professional day, that very first one?
Oh.
They're still going to get their personal day and their personal and/or professional.
The optional.
So they're still going to get the two, but if they didn't have to worry about
Professional day?
Whether it's professional or not, and they were approved to go, it would be the same thing if they had two days, two personal or one personal and one personal and/or professional.
Okay.
No, I don't want to take them away from them at all, no.
Okay, thank you.
They just need to be able to add them into their sick bank if they need to.
Mrs. Smith?
I guess I have a question as a layperson. The, okay, so the in-service days are not the days we're talking about?
No.
Okay, so all these days that the teachers are going and learning about different standards, because there've been, as a parent, I know, the teachers have been gone quite a bit. So, the professional days you're talking about are, that encompasses the professional development that I want teachers to be able to get, because they choose to learn those things, or are they things that you chose?
Both.
Okay. And you can give me an example?
Would you mind if I call a teacher up to talk about this, please?
I would love a teacher, that would be, I'm sorry, I need professional day 101.
Or a principal, I can certainly explain it, they probably can explain it better, though, and, but that's up to the board. If you, if you would prefer not, I'll give you examples of that, though, and talk about that. I actually was in a classroom today where there was a teacher talking about this, and she happens to be here, not about this, but about the training, and she was talking about the Common Core training, she was talking about the formative assessment training, she was talking about the autism training. We have what we call CI3T, where we have teams of teachers and administrators that come out of each building, that are working toward behavior plan for the school and for the district. We have Carissa that has done training with the interventionists, so one of those interventionists come up for training, and that, for example, the RTI that we've had, and what does tier two look like as far as instruction, what are strategies that can be used for that, that would be an example of the training. Leo, if she were to give a training, it would be about gifted, and she might offer that, probably is going to offer it after school, but she's also had times, I'm thinking, where you may have offered it during the day, or certainly our folks have offered it during the day, that would be optional training that teachers could go to. Something like, when Sherry offered a training with Karen on vocabulary, because the teachers had requested it. In fact, I went to them a couple of days ago, I was looking through the PLC notebooks, and noticed where the teachers had said, we need more training, because there's a section in there that talks about, what do you need for administration, for support? They were talking about, we need tier two training for those students who are not, remember that tier one is every, every one of your students, tier two is where you're separating those students out into their different levels, so they were talking about that. So when I see that in a PLC notebook, then I'm going to be heading to either Sherry or to Karen and saying, we need to offer this training at some point in time. Now, if we have enough teachers that we feel that's across the boards that we need it, like we did the letters training where every teacher needed that, then we'll bring every teacher in. If it's going to be a situation where there are only certain teachers, or whether, if she's offering, for example, the police offering for the higher students, or the more advanced students on a tier two, then it may be those teachers that teach that. But it's that kind of training that we're talking about, it's training that's critical for our teachers to develop. The district is where it is today because of the professional development our teachers have received, and I absolutely believe that. In fact, the teacher today told me that there was a time a few years ago, and she was referencing a gifted child, when she said, I realize that this child was having behavioral problems, and she said, I didn't recognize at the time that's what they needed. And since working with Leah, she has recognized that, since going to Vanderbilt, she's recognized that. A TDL day would be when Robin takes her team to Nashville with Vanderbilt, and they're talking about the program that we're doing there, the partnership with Vanderbilt. Or it can be a time, we had TDL, when she took her students, her teachers, to see the leader in me school in Clarksville, that was a TDL day. Another TDL day may be when Dawn is planning for his school at Overall Creek, and we go and we talk with Cindy Smith Walters, and we go to see another environmental school that has a focus. So those are the kind of days we're talking about, that are the temporary duty leave days. And they are absolutely critical to our school district. What we'll be doing next is, we'll be working on technology, so we probably will have a team that will be consisting of one person from each school, that will be learning about technology, and we'll be able to go back and teach, but those are the kinds of trainings we're talking about. For Joe, it may be that he's bringing in his resource teachers to learn something new about an IEP meeting, and how to run an IEP meeting. But there are things that are so important to what we're doing in this district, that we give temporary duty leave for. And what I have found is that those days, if we don't have those days, then there will be no change as far as our teachers are teaching, so their growth then becomes what they already know, and we have to have, teachers want to learn. If they didn't want to learn, they wouldn't be in teaching. And so what we've tried to do is provide some very strong staff development, and we'll continue to do that, because we have teachers that still are wanting to learn.
Now, don't get me wrong, I just want to clarify, I am for professional development.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it looks like. It's really meeting, it's really meeting the teachers, it's knowing the teachers, and listening to the teachers, and what they need as far as professional development. But beyond that, it's also being able to look to the future, and two years ago, say, we need to set up intervention. Now, we didn't know that RTI was coming down the pike, but we know that, or it's going to be, we know that the next push is going to be technology and then science, so looking far enough down the pike that we can form those foundational things that the teachers need to be able to teach that when that time comes. That's kind of what it looks like, that's a long answer for what it looks like.
Dr. Brown?
Well, first, I think we need to be very careful, whatever we do is in compliance with state regulations regarding personal and professional development days. And I can understand the teachers wanting to keep as many days as possible in their bank, and right now, while we have enough funds to fund the temporary duty, it's very easy to take that one professional... that one professional development day, then go into the temporary duty. I don't know how long those funds are going to be available. So as a board, we cannot correct anything that's happened in the past, we can't solve any inequities that have happened in the past. What we can do is try to be sure that when we move forward, we have a very consistent method of dealing with this, whether it's Dr. Gilbert or someone else in that position. So if we do not have a, an administrative policy, or a board policy that specifically spells out how these days will be used, that's my suggestion, is that we come up with a very clear policy that can be communicated, everyone can understand it, and go forward today.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Mr. Campbell?
Well, I don't want anybody to think I'm trying to take teachers' professional days away from them, okay? Because I think they need them, and I think they use them. I'm just concerned that everybody doesn't understand what's going on, and how days are being allotted and used and charged against the days that the teacher has. Every teacher would love to be able to add more than 10 days a year to their sick leave. But I just, I just feel like that we're not, we're not communicating somewhere along the line with teachers for them to understand exactly how they're being charged these days against their professional or personal day. And I just think we need to make sure that we let them know somehow.
Did you have comments on Mrs. Phillips?
On a related note, I'd be curious to know the average amount of days teachers are out of the classroom
Okay.
for professional development. And also, I would like to add to that, the average number of days a teacher takes for sick leave.
Okay.
So we can have just a kind of a ballpark idea of how many days the kids are, I mean, teachers are out of the classroom.
Does that take care of your...
No, that's it. Thank you in this way.
And Dr. Gilbert will take care of that. And I think we'll have a good explanation to give our staff on the difference in the two, the two types or three types of days that they have. Unlike Mrs. Smith, it's a little confusing to me, but I can rest assured the teachers know. They know. They're concerned. But thank you, Dr. Gilbert, for your explanation for that. Reports and information.
Okay, the, actually, I'm probably going to turn all this over to Mr. Anderson. You all had asked, in addition to the construction update, and then the revenue, the usual monthly reports, there was discussion at the retreat about bus, buses, and so I've asked him to give that. So, Mr. Anderson, if you'll just take the reports and information, that'd be great.
Okay, would you like me to go in the order that's on the agenda?
Ever how do you want to do it?
The construction update, we've added quite a few things, so you'll know what's going on in renovations and in maintenance projects. But the Hobgood, new administration, Food Service Area, we're finishing up the final punch list. We are still looking at adding some additional parking spaces on the Jupiter Loop, that's the backside of the school, because we're experiencing a lot of people there that we don't have enough parking spaces for during the day. So we're looking at, at doing that out of the same funds.
Let me comment about that and explain that a little bit. Hobgood has, has made a tremendous partner out of MTSU. In fact, if you look at, at Hobgood, what's happening there is very similar to what's happening at campus school. So there are a large number of interns, a large number of MTSU's students over there, so if you try to park, that's why.
Okay. The next one's the, the new school that we're building. I'm sure you're all familiar with that one. There are pictures in your board packet of where we are on that. Every month, we do get new aerial shots of it, and I understand some of you went on a tour of the school to know where they are right now. The project is about 30 days behind because of the poor weather that we had in January and February. The construction company and the architects said that time can be made up if we get some better weather and we can get totally undercover, under roof. They are aware of the opportunities on weekends to work. I have talked with the architect, he has relayed that information on to the construction company, and they assure us that they are people working in the schools on weekends as well, now that a major, most of the school is under roof, so they can do internal work. Fencing at schools, we, we are doing currently to get ready for the move of the pre-K, we're doing fencing around the playground areas at Discovery, or Reeves-Rogers Campus, Hobgood, Mitchell-Nelson Primary Campus, to get ready for the pre-K to move in. And that's going to be done over the spring break. So we want to get that stuff done and out of the way before we head into the next school year.
Chris?
Yes?
The fencing at Discovery School, that's not the, the one we talked about, about across the back part of the campus, this is just around the playground, correct?
Yes, sir. This is just around the playgrounds for the pre-K because of the rules of pre-K.
Got you, okay.
Okay. Central office roof was an insurance item, that's covered under the city's insurance program. We had damage done to that quite a while back. Again, the weather delays, it was supposed to be done at Christmas break, and they're still working on it because they couldn't work below 40 degrees. And as you know, we had some extreme weather in January, February. They're on the final piece of it now, they're putting up the trim or the flashing around it to finish up. They should be done another week or so. Another section, on the front section of the building, it's that, it's called a cow wall, which is like the glass top over the entranceway. Well, that is leaking as well, and the city's aware of that, and they're looking at redoing that into a standing metal seam roof section, so we don't have that issue again. But we're looking at that, and that'll take three to four weeks, but most of the work will be done at night because of the, they have to knock it down, get that, get that roof off, put a new one on. Foundation work at Discovery School, that was in your capital outlay budget approved last year. We have pre-bid conference on, on the 25th, which I believe was today, and bid opening on April 3rd. We're going to be asking for you to approve the contract amount at the next board special call meeting. And that work will be done over the summer. Exterior doors at MNE and MNP, that also was in your capital outlay budget for this past year. We have done, rebid on that. Legal Department has the documents now to them, and we're going to do the, do it in-house. The cost came back, it was quite exorbitant to do it by having a total contractor. What we're going to do now is purchase the doors and install them ourselves to cut back on the expenditures of that. And that should be done probably over the summers, we won't have to do that or in the evenings, just depends on when we can get the, get everything finalized. Playground rubber surface at Irma Segal, we've done the review of the various styles, and we're waiting for final verification from the supplier, that it's on the Tennessee Comprehensive Purchasing Network. If they're on that network, we don't have to go out to a full bid, because it's already in the network and already been approved. And the bid that we have is $50,000 less than our original estimate. So that, that's a very good thing, that we're there at that point. We're doing some major maintenance projects at schools. Bellwood Electricity Transformer Replacement, that's actually a, a project that Murfreesboro Electric Department came to us with. They want to replace the location of the transformer. The transformer sits right next to the school cafeteria and classrooms, and they want to move it further away from the building. And so that's, it's just something they're going to do on our campus to help, to help with relocation of that. And that should be done with the spring break, but that's been working through the channels. Northfield Thermal Windows, if you'll notice, the windows at Northfield are fogged up on some of the sections. That's happening also at Irma Segal, Black Fox, and Kason Lane. They're all the same era of type of windows, they're thermal panes, they have a, a seal between them. Well, the seals are breaking down. And we're replacing 89 windows at Northfield because of the failure in those. But these other three schools will also have to be replaced. And when you see your budget for next year, we have built in to replace those as an ongoing thing, because we know we're going to have to do that. But that, the work at Northfield will happen over spring break, since those were the school, that was the school in the worst, worst shape. Mitchell-Nelson Basketball Court, that's something we did in our, our maintenance department. Principal Newell had asked that we move the basketball court that was actually in the parking lot, right in the front of the school, get it out of the parking lot and put it up into the grass area. So our maintenance department took care of that, and has already moved it, and, and gives more parking, and it's obviously safer for the kids, because now cars don't come through the parking lot, but the basketball court was. Irma Segal also has an HVAC control panel issue. We are going to be having to replace that unit, so we don't have any issues over the summer. It deals on the cooling side of it. So that's another, it's pretty major expense-wise, but it's something we have to do, because our schools are now hitting that 20-year mark, 25-year mark. We have to be replacing some of these electronics that are that old. And the last one on the list is tree removal at Discovery School. We have the trees right in the front of the school. There's been some discussions between engineers that we use, and this, and the city of Murfreesboro, Urban Environmental, we're going to have a meeting to decide if we're going to go forward with this or not. Obviously, we do not want to cut down trees, but if they're causing damage to our foundations, we need to make sure we're taking care of that. So engineer believes that was one of the reasons we had the failure at Discovery School on the foundation, and Urban Environmental says there may be some alternatives. So we're going to meet with them next week and try to work through a plan on that. But that's, that's the items I had.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Mrs. Phillips, and then Mrs. Rehneer.
Just out of curiosity, when you moved the, the basketball court at Mitchell-Nelson, is it on a grassy area now?
No, it's concrete now.
It's on concrete. So they have a place to dribble, bounce the ball. Okay, good.
Mrs. Rehneer?
Sorry, I have this little thing going on again. You said that the Bellwood Electricity Transformer, Murfreesboro Electric is taking care of that. All right, what about all the other things, the thermal windows and the control panel at Segal? Are we, were these, these were not budgeted items for this year, correct?
No, but we, we always, well, yes and no. We always build in a certain amount for replacement and repairs and maintenance in our maintenance budget.
Okay.
And we kind of really never know what's going to break down, or what's going to break down, so we have, it's covered.
So it's in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
But now that we know we're going to have to do it, we want to put it in capital outlay for next.
So we'll have it in there for the other schools?
Right. So we know we can move forward with it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Campbell, and then Mrs. Smith.
We talked Friday at the, was it Friday retreat, yeah, about tennis courts. And you asked me to, our volunteer, something, anyway, to contact. I did call Lanny today, but he was, was out sick yesterday, and they weren't real sure whether he was coming in today. But I did talk to Rob Lyons after Mr. Anderson gave me the, the list. And not real sure of the status at this point in time, but they had talked about two of them, and the other three, I think, they were considering. And he assured me that when the city got into the budget process, that he would get back in touch with me and let me know what they were going to do about those tennis courts.
Great.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Smith?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Campbell, for following up with those tennis courts, because they're a disaster. They, they need, they are dangerous to our children to be running around those tennis courts. And, and something does need to be done about that. So thank you very much.
I went by and looked at them over the weekend.
They, something needs to be done, and I appreciate you doing that. I was under the impression, so I just want to make sure that they get some credit for this, that the Mitchell-Nelson PTA paid for part of the basketball court.
Ms. Newell?
The maintenance did the basketball court at the elementary school, and the DGO paid for the court at the primary. Can we have two?
Thank you.
Thank you. Stan?
Okay, that's the end of the construction report. There was a request, Dr. Gilbert relayed on to me, a request about our transportation update on buses and things. And so I put together some information on that for you. I'll just give you kind of like an outline of where we are transportation-wise, what equipment we have, et cetera. Right now, we have 31 total buses, they're all diesel-powered buses, 22 are regular education buses, and we have nine special ed buses. We have one spare bus, and it's only a special ed, and it's only a 21-passenger bus. It's a very small bus that was bought years ago, so that's the only one we have. Three of the regular education buses are set to be retired at the end of the school year. If the law changes, meaning the law that's currently in the legislature to increase either an unlimited amount of years of usage, which I don't think will pass, or increase in mileage to 250,000 miles, if either one of those things pass, then two of those buses, two buses, none of the buses have to be retired if they pass those things. If they don't pass those, then two of them are a must, they have to be retired. One of the buses has 160-something thousand miles, and we can ask for a two-year extension on that bus. So we could, in other words, we're going to have to buy buses, if the law doesn't pass, or if the law does pass, we need to do something. The two buses that we retire, they have over 200,000 miles. If they up the limit to 250, we're going to be good for another year or two on those buses as well. All the buses are state inspected annually, I'm not sure you're aware of that, they have an annual inspection. If they're over the 15-year limit for years 16 and 17, and right now, the talk is they might go to 18, they're over that, they're inspected twice a year. And they come back with special electronic equipment, what they're looking for are cracks in the frame of the bus. And so they, they come and check those buses over 15 years, twice a year, inspected. We drove last year over 870 miles per day.
Over how many?
870 miles per day. And that's with the 29 buses. This year, we're pushing 900 to 1,000 miles per day in transportation. We had a total last year of 4,159 students request transportation, and were approved for transportation based on where they are. Now, not every child used it, but those are the ones that filed the official request to have transportation services. I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, we were awarded one of the top 10 maintenance shops for buses in the, in the United States. One of the top 10. That is a tremendous honor that we receive, and I'm real proud to say that we have the same two mechanics working in our shop today that were back then. And they receive hours and hours of training. They're both full-time mechanics, they receive training in electrical systems, charging systems, anti-lock systems, anti-lock brake systems, air brake systems, and wheelchair lifts and things. So they're receiving a lot of, a lot of training. Our buses are all equipped with four video cameras. Most districts struggle to get one video camera. Our buses have four different video camera views with sound. And it is recorded digitally, it's not even recorded on a cassette tape, it's a digital recording of everything that goes on in a bus. So we can tell you a lot of times when something's happening on a school bus. We have strobe lights on the roof, if it's a foggy day, and they're, just over top of a hill, and a lot of times you can't see it, our strobe lights light up the sky. And that's another safety feature that we have on every one of our buses. We have an additional strobe light on the back of the bus when the brakes come on. So it's right in the driver's eye, and it's flashing red at them to know, that's it. Because a lot of bus accidents are rear-end collisions where people hit into a bus. So we have, we have those extra features. On the roof of every bus is painted a very large number that can be seen from the sky, in case there was some kind of way we needed to know what bus was where. And one of the really special things, we have onboard GPS tracking of every bus. We can tell you where that bus is down to the second, where it is on the roads, whose house it's at, how long it's parked at that house waiting for a child to come out. We are very high-tech on our transportation department. We have two-way radio communication on every bus, we have safety passenger inspection system. What that means is, the bus driver, and when they finish their day, they have to go to the back of the bus, push a button, that means they have to check to make sure no kid was left on the bus when they get back to the shop. So before they exit the bus, they have to go back and push that button to log off the bus. We have 911 capability, they can call 911 for onboard the bus. Of course, we have seating charts, rosters, first aid kits, safety-related tools, medically fragile children's health protocols, and we have all these things on our buses. So our transportation department, you know, we've received the safety awards, we are very recognized by the state as one of the leaders, obviously, from, from the award we got nationally. So we, we feel really good about our bus transportation. Where we are right now on the buses, we, we end up getting our buses two different ways. One is through a competitive bid, or what the state allows a piggyback purchase. Piggyback is when another district bids on buses. So if you can piggyback on a bus that's being purchased by a school system that's buying like 20 buses at one time, obviously, that bid is lower. Well, under the state laws, we can piggyback on that purchase. And so we look at doing it either way, is piggyback or through our own bid specifications. So we are right now waiting to see what's going to happen with the state laws. We haven't pulled the trigger to buy anything. We're waiting to find out what happens, because it's going to help us. The other, the other thing that I want to let you know is, because our school zones, with the two additional schools, our school zones have actually shrunk in size in most cases. And when we shrunk the size down, and we, we scheduled our start times... cases, and when we shrunk the size down, and we, we scheduled our start times to match up the schools that we're taking, from, for example, Overall Creek is open at seven-thirty, because it's taken the majority of, of the scale zone north of Highway ninety-six, we then don't need to buy any additional buses to service that school. The same thing is true at Reeves, Reeves Rogers, and at John Pittard, they start at eight-thirty, so those two schools are going to start at the same time, this is unshrunk, so we're able to do that. So, that's how we're proceeding. I didn't know really what you were wanting to know, so I tried to give you a big, broad brush paint of, of, about our transportation department. Any other questions, anyone has?
Mr. Barrett?
I just did, so right now, we just have a special ed spare? Is that what I heard you say?
One, one tiny specialist.
So, we don't have a regular ed bus spare?
No, no, we don't. Well, what happens is, say a bus breaks down, that's going to happen.
Yeah.
What happens, we double up the routes, so it means that we may have to have kids stay and, and wait for the bus to finish route and come back, which then puts us into the situation we're really trying to get out of, which was bus room duty. So, on occasion, we'll have a bus room duty because of a broken-down bus.
That brings my next question. How many, do you know how many days we've had buses out of commission, or you probably don't have it off the top of your head?
I don't know off the top of my head, but there's days, there's one day we had two buses out of commission.
So, we had that extended?
We had, yeah, we had that.
We had children sitting, okay.
And I actually looked to see what our, what the amount is that we've paid so far out of bus room duty, and it's a fraction of what it was last year, because we don't need bus room duty except for emergencies, and so I was glad to see that, but I just know that it does exist, and it's a possibility if a bus breaks down.
All right, Mr. Barrett, Mrs. Smith?
It's kind of a follow-up, so how many breakdowns do you think that we've had this year with students on the bus?
On the bus?
Mm-hmm.
I only know of like two that were on the bus, but there are times where there may be a minor accident, and the kids may have to sit and wait till the police come and clear everything, and everybody's checked.
Right.
But, that's happened...
We had a big day, one time.
We had two, two on one day.
Yeah.
Big day. Fortunately, no one was hurt.
Right, right, but you don't, you're not aware of any, just breakdowns with kids on the bus?
We had, we had one or two breakdowns beyond that.
Okay.
During, during the year that, that buses just stopped. So, we send a mechanic out, and if we have a spare bus, one of, one of the other neat things is, our mechanics are, are certified to drive, have a CDL license, they can drive, they don't have an S endorsement for students, which means they can take an empty bus to that bus if we had the spare, and then they can load them up on that other bus, so we have a mechanic on site, they've got on another bus, they've gone, and we can deal with the bus being there, with our mechanic. So, that's one of the reasons we really, we really need spare buses. In the past, we've had to borrow some from Mid-South Bus, we've had to rent buses, we've had to, you know, temporarily lease them, so there's all different ways we've tried to, we've tried to make it through without any additional bus purchases.
Ms. Campbell?
This recognition award, when did that come about?
It came about for the year of two thousand and nine, so we got it in, in two thousand and nine, but it was for that year, so it's been four years, four years ago.
Okay.
And, like I said, we have, I'm sorry.
Did you say we had gotten something this year as well?
No, 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 just that we have the same two mechanics that were there when we received that award. We do maintenance, on every bus, we keep a maintenance sheet, every three thousand miles come and get their oil changed, and they go through and make sure every bus is totally inspected, because we have to make sure the brakes are good, brake lines are good, if they're not good, the tires are not good, we have, it's in your budget, it's built in for replacement, and we replace those things, but they're constantly looked at. And as you know, bus drivers, before they go out in a bus, they do walk around every bus and they have a standard check they have to do.
Mrs. Rehneer?
You know, we had many discussions about this last year when we bought the extra buses. At the beginning of the year, we were able to have a bus waiting for every route at the end of the day, is that still in place?
I would say ninety percent of the time, those buses are there waiting for schools, and you can ask the principals of the, of the schools that start at eight-thirty, if they're there waiting. There, she's giving a big thumbs up out there in the audience.
Okay, me too then.
She's a late school. It, it is really, has really been efficient now, because they have basically one hour to run their route, and we don't have any routes that are an hour long.
Right.
So, they can get to the next school in time. It's been great.
Well, I appreciate that so much, I was the big pushy person about this, and I'm glad that it's worked out so well.
Thank you.
Proceed, Ms. Sanders.
Okay, the personnel reports in your, in your board packet, the financial report, it shows right now that we're fifty-five thousand dollars in the red. I need to make sure that, that you know that we are waiting for a, money from the city for the technology purchase again. We, we spend the money, then the city reimburses us for it, and right now, the city, the due from the city is two million, six-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, so that's quite a bit, that puts us in the, you know, basically in the, in the black as far as our cash flow. Last year at this time, we were two million, four-hundred-and-seventeen thousand to the good, when you factor in the amount due back from the city that we've already spent, we're two million, six-hundred-and-thirty-two, so basically, we're, we're at the same level as where we were last year. Revenue-wise, it, it shows up where the city has paid us, because it kind of inflates our revenue picture, because the money came into the revenue side from the city, they've already paid us two hundred and, two million, three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, they've already paid us that, so it makes our revenue look higher. The, the amount that they've paid us equals five-point-nine percent of our revenue, I hate to be killing you with all these numbers, but it kind of, for me, it's what I'm processing in my head to make sure we are where we should be. At sixty-four-point-one percent, we're at the sixty-six-point-seven percent of the year. Last year at this time, we were at sixty-four-point-six, so we're slightly behind on revenue coming in. Sales tax right now are running flat, this past month was only up a point-seven, that's behind the state right now, so we're, we're basically looking at flat revenues coming in. Our property taxes were up a little bit than over last year at this time, so that's, that's where we are on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, the expenditure is all in line except for, obviously, the technology one, which is seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine percent, instead of sixty-point-seven, but that's because we bought all the computers and we had to tag it to a, to an expense line, so that's where that is. And that represents twelve-point-six percent, or we've spent fifty-seven-point-nine percent of our operating budget last year, at this time, we were fifty-nine-point-seven, so we're on target there. Okay, any questions about the financial piece? Okay, oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Rehneer?
I'm sorry, you know, you've got a little asterisk at the very bottom with the two new technology purchases to be split with the city, what do we have to pay?
Four hundred thousand.
Okay, that's what I thought, but, but the way this is written, it made me think it was two-and-a-half million.
Well, we, we buy it, we process the bills, we pay it, and then the city reimburses us.
Will reimburse us?
Right. And it's just, and it's, it's when they come in, that's why they haven't paid us the other two million, they, they, it hasn't gone through their process yet.
Okay.
City's real good about taking care of us.
Yay, for the city!
All right, on the enrollment thing, we're up twenty-eight students over last month.
Whoa.
Which is good, ten of those students are special need students. The, the pre-K program is, this, every, every month as a child turns of age, we have to let them into the program as soon as they, as soon as they come of age, and five of those new students were children who turned the pre-K age of admittance to the school. So, up twenty-eight students is great, our PTR is, is from K through eight, nineteen-point-one, I'm sorry, K through three, nineteen-point-one-five, and four through six is twenty-point-zero-six. Overall, district average is nineteen-point-four-eight pupil-teacher ratio, and because kids love to come to school, our attendance is ninety-six percent, that's back up from ninety-five last month, so...
Wow.
They just love coming to our school, and our teachers teaching them, and everybody's like this.
Yeah.
Good break for everyone.
And that's the end of the report, anyone has any questions on that? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. On the other business, there's your draft agenda for our meeting on Tuesday, April the eighth. Anything need to be added to this agenda?
I don't see it, I don't see it. I think there will be the, the bid for the foundation, the Discovery School, that will be added to the agenda.
All righty. Thank you. Mrs. Price, if you'll add that to our agenda? Is there anything else, board members, that we need to entertain for the, for next board meeting?
When Dr. Gilbert will, and you may have already done so, put out the information about the open houses for the parents?
Lisa, and that, that's something I haven't even talked to her about, I'm, I'm letting her handle that.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The flyers are in all the schools already?
The flyers are in the schools already? Okay.
And the rest will come out back to you.
Okay.
So, um, so that will be, is there a way that they can be publicly released, more than just flyers at the schools?
Do you, do you want to address that, what your plans are as far as open house, Lisa?
That can be in the next meeting, I just was, I would like to see...
Okay, and we can communicate that with you too.
Yesterday.
I can email you that.
She, she was asking about what's the date for registration, and I said yesterday.
From what, from what I understand, and it was also parent-teacher conferences, I asked each principal today to give me a report on how that went. In most of our schools, well, all of our schools, I think, were very pleased with the day as far as the parent-teacher conference during the day, so I'm certainly glad that we put that into the calendar for next year. Some, I know some schools said they had almost a hundred percent, one school that I'm thinking of, they sort of had a competition among their teachers of who would have the highest amount. There was one school that had that, they said they only had, the lowest I heard was that one of the schools said in their upper grades, they had about sixty percent, but I don't know that that's very different than what they would ordinarily have, but I think everybody, from what I heard from the principals today, they were pleased with the day.
I heard about a few cancellations, it was awfully pretty day.
Oh.
Upstairs.
If there's nothing else for the board, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seconding.
We adjourn.
All right.